Welcome everyone to the Township Council Meeting, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. This meeting is now called to order. Councilwoman Hablitz, lead us in the salute to the flag. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the Minnesota building located at two twenty five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January fourth, two thousand and twenty four. A copy of the notice was sent to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, at this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
President.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Hablitz.
Present.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Present.
Council President Scobah.
Present. If there's no objections, have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty sixth and the workshop meeting of March eleventh.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancheri, seconded by Councilman Murphy. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Mayor Damiano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I know the Women's History Month presentation is under the Councilmember report, but we're going to get that underway right now. And before we begin honoring three women who are joining us here this evening and who have had a major impact in our community, I'm going to read a proclamation on behalf of all three of them. So I don't have to do it three times and everybody hears the same thing each and every time. And then I'm going to call each one of them up and present them with the proclamation for them. And then I guess we have a couple of group photos as well coming, coming up. So we'll, we'll do that after each one individually. All right. And the proclamation reads, whereas each year Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved upon our community. And whereas in overcoming discrimination, harassment, or hardship, women have been bold and fearless, never given up on the promise that with hard work and determination, nothing is out of reach. And whereas in remembering the trailblazers of the past and the heroines of the present day, we honor their legacies by carrying forward the valuable lessons learned from the powerful examples they set. Whether teaching our children, caring for our sick, serving in our wars, starting businesses, serving in elected positions, or venturing into unknown frontiers, generations of women believe their gender was no obstacle to what they could achieve. And whereas during Women's History Month, we recognize the advances we have made in this state for women that acknowledge that more needs to be achieved so women can gain gender equality and access to the prosperity of this state. And whereas during Women's History Month, let us honor the accomplished and visionary women who have helped build our community, including those who, whose contributions have not been adequately recognized and celebrated. Now therefore, I, James Belford Damiano, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, hereby proclaim March two thousand and twenty four to be Women's History Month in the township and recognize all of the women in our community, and especially those in leadership roles who continuously improve upon our community each day. And now I would like to ask Jane to join me up here, who is the Vice President and Branch Manager from Lakeland Bank. And a little bit about Jane. Jane Caston is a Vice President and Branch Manager at Lakeland Bank here in Little Falls for the past nine years. As a seasoned professional with forty years of banking experience, Jane is known for driving brand awareness, maximizing operational soundness, and delivering financial performance. Jane was, Jane was born and raised in Wayne, New Jersey, and currently resides in Totoa, New Jersey, with her husband for the past thirty years. Jane is customer focused and community centric with a great passion and gratitude to partner with several different community leaders in Little Falls, as well as in Passaic County, to support their endeavors when and wherever possible. Jane, we are thankful for the partnerships here in Little Falls, and we're honored to have you as part of our community. Next, I'm going to ask Nadine to join me up here. And a little bit about Nadine. Nadine Highness has been a resident of Little Falls for over forty years. After graduating from Montclair State University, she worked on campus in the Academic Advisory Office for over nine years. She simultaneously raised three children and actively volunteered at their schools. In October two thousand and twenty, two thousand and one, Nadine started to work at the Little Falls Recreation Department. At the Recreation Center, she was heavily involved with running many programs and activities in addition to the children's summer day camp. At the Civic Center, she is involved with numerous activities, including supervising the Senior Social Club and volunteering with the Senior Advisory Board. Nadine can be seen some nights and weekends at the Civic Center, where she coordinates and supervises meetings, activities, and events for groups in Little Falls, such as the Little Falls Biz, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and the Little Falls Historical Society. She is always the first one to lend a hand, and her dedication is nothing short of admirable. Thank you, guys. So far, the most incredible thing, I think, so far has been the fact that both Nadine and Jane have been in some of the roles for over forty years. Because looking at the two of them, you barely know that they were on this earth for forty years. And they somehow managed to be in those roles for forty years. So good for both of you. And now, last but not least, I'm going to call up Sergeant Danielle Struthers-Fleck. Danielle was born and raised in Little Falls, and she's a graduate of Passaic Valley High School. She graduated from Montclair State University, QL, with a degree in Justice Studies and a minor in Juvenile Justice. Sergeant Struthers-Fleck joined the Little Falls Fire Department in February two thousand and two, and as the first full-time female officer. She quickly climbed the ranks and was a detective from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty one. During this time, she assisted with multiple investigations in a joint task force with the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office and the Passaic County Sheriff's Department. In addition, Sergeant Struthers-Fleck assisted with the FBI on a joint investigation where she was recognized with the Honorable Service Award for action taken on February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. She continues to serve and protect this community as a sergeant with our police department, and we are thankful for her service. Just for the records clear, it's been the Little Falls Police Department, not the Little Falls Fire Department, like you said there.
What's that?
Mr. Man.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to council remarks. I'm happy to tell the council, the governing body, that we had a great, successful St. Patty's Day senior event. We were maxed out at over a hundred individuals that attended. They had a really, really fun time. And also, some of these seniors that came from different townships were really impressed with the program, you know, and commented that they were going to call their mayors and tell their mayors that they should be doing, that they should be doing the same thing that Little Falls should be doing and taking care of their seniors by having these fun activities. It was really well attended. And the next event's going to be the physical therapy program on knees, which is going to be this Wednesday from twelve to three. It's going to include free pizza for those that want to attend. We have twenty-five individuals already signed up for that program to discuss how to take care of your knees as we get older. I want to thank the Police Department, Mayor. We had a meeting discussing the Historical Society on the parking issue. That recently, as you know, the slate was delivered for the old police station. And I came in, I think, this morning, and it worked very well with the parking in our parking lot there. And I'll let Councilman Murphy talk. We did have a meeting before this meeting concerning the budget. So I will pass the next report to Councilman Murphy.
Thank you, Council President. Two other items I want to report on, too. This Wednesday, from four o'clock PM to ten o'clock PM, the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee will be doing another donate, dine to donate, wrote it down wrong, at Maggie's Town Tavern, to which a portion of those proceeds go to our local shelters. So if you're around on Wednesday, definitely stop by Maggie's. It's a really good event, and it'll definitely help out. I just wanted to give a public shout out and thank you to Joan Nixon from the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office. She came to our meeting this past month, and she was awesome. We're actually going to set up another training with her. So I just want to publicly thank her. It was, it was awesome for the committee. We learned a lot, so just want to give a shout out to her. We also had a meeting tonight on the budget, along with Council President and our Assistant Business Administrator and Business Administrator. And I think one of the goals is, is really going to be looking at our debt and finally starting to really decrease, decrease some of that debt. And so I'm happy with how our budget came out, we're getting services and, you know, having a plan to decrease our debt. So I'm happy that we're able to come to that agreement and present to the rest of the council as well.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Councilwoman Patel.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to first thank the Clifton Health Department. They were at the St. Patty's Day Luncheon. It was great to see how many residents went up and interacted with the staff, were able to obtain information, not only educational information, but it's another avenue for them to be able to know what events are taking place. The Clifton Health Department is still continuing with their free dental clinic for school age children. The services provided, you get exams, x-rays, cleanings, fillings. It's for any children between the ages of five to eighteen. So it's a great program. You just have to call nine seven three four seven zero two zero three nine to make an appointment. And in terms of PB Operation Grad Events on April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, it's their Tricky Tray, which is forty-five dollars a ticket. On Sunday, April fourteenth, between nine and two thirty PM, they're doing their clothing and shoe drive. So stop by Passaic Valley High School, do some spring cleaning, empty those closets. And then finally, also on April fourteenth, Passaic Valley High School will be hosting its sixth annual Autism Walk. That's from nine AM in the morning till eleven AM. It's always a great event, so make sure to sign up and stop by and support that great cause. That's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Patel. Councilwoman Hablitz.
Thank you, Council President. I would again like to congratulate all of the women who were honored tonight for Women's History, Women's History Month. We started honoring women last year. Myself started honoring the women with this council last year. And this year, I'm happy to say that Councilwoman Patel helped me out this year, and it was very nice working with her and bringing this event to fruition. This year, we are bringing back our bike rodeo. That will be Saturday, May the fourth, from ten to twelve PM. It will be for children ages six and up. Bring a bike, bring a helmet. There'll be helmet fittings, bicycle safety checks, bicycle skill course, bicycle safety education, and more. It's really a fun day for the kids. So come on out. We will have a rain date for Saturday, May eleventh. This Saturday that just passed, Councilman Vancheri and I attended the Family Fun Night from the Little Falls Biz and the Little Falls Library. It was a fun night. We had lots of attendance. The kids seemed to be having a good time watching a movie. So thank you to Little Falls Biz and to the library for making that happen. Lastly, very excited. This week, we have applied for our Passaic County Open Space Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Lewis Street Playground. Hopefully bring a playground, redoing the basketball courts, and putting a much-needed field to that area. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hablitz. Councilwoman Vancheri.
Thanks, Council President. I echo, too. It was nice to have the Women's History Ceremony tonight, honoring three great women that have done a lot for our community. So grateful for my two colleagues for bringing this together. Couple updates from me. Next week, on Tuesday, April second, at six o'clock, we are holding our Annual Autism Awareness Month Flag Raising Ceremony in the process of putting the program together. Reached out to a few organizations, and Pam Donovan from Ethan and the Beans is also going to join us as well. So if anybody's around, be stopped by at six o'clock. We'll probably have a table with some information as well, and likely one of the residents may be selling some autism awareness items as well. I do want to mention, too, another Awareness Month ceremony I'm working on is recently, a resident had reached out and said, you know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Can we do anything? So in the process of pulling that together as well, so that we can have a ceremony to honor those that have been, you know, helping with the fight when it comes to mental health and the stigma that's related. So more to come on that. And then just a couple other items, just working on, you know, as we get ready for May with the Memorial Day weekend activities from the Concert in the Park to the parade that takes place on that Saturday. Just going to start having some conversations internally with the folks from the American Legion, some others, just to kind of map out those two days. So more to come on that. As Councilwoman Hablitz alluded to, you know, we attended the Family Fun Night at the library on Friday. It was really nice to see, you know, a lot of kids there running around, having fun with their parents. And then, you know, the next night, several of us attended the Boy Scouts Pasta Night as well at the Civic Center. It was another nice event by the kids. There's a lot going on in the community tonight. If you go down by the rec, there's a basketball championship. Tomorrow night, there's another one taking place. So we're probably going to have some teams coming in soon, Mayor, especially tonight, since it's Little Falls versus Little Falls. Tomorrow is Little Falls versus Totoa, so hopefully the, the boys beat Totoa. That's it for me, so I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vancheri. I just want to circle back to the St. Patty's Day event. I want to thank my colleagues for showing up that, that afternoon and helping serve the food. When I was doing the salads, I looked over, I saw the mayor with two tongs, one handing out corned beef and the other one handing out cabbage. I mean, it was pretty busy there at that line. And oh, thank you to Officer Vanik, who showed up as well. Seniors do like to get their food pretty quickly when it's time to eat. And so we were able to serve that crowd pretty diligently. Chief, do you have anything for this governing body tonight?
Thank you, Council President. I'm happy to report that the Township of Little Falls is getting the Distracted Driving Grant. So that would be a hundred hours of enforcement beginning April first. So we'll have additional patrols out on the road, specifically targeting distracted driving. These are enforcement grants, so we will, you know, be, be issuing summonses, unfortunately. But we're putting the message out now. If you're looking for a break, this is your break.
I appreciate you alerting the residents, and it's not unfortunate. Fortunately, we appreciate the safety of this community, which is what we all take in oath to first protect the residents of Little Falls. So thank you for the fine job you're doing. Our Hometown Hero banners program is really kicking off. We have Lance Corporal Vincent Caprano. He's a USMC, active duty. He is a Passaic Valley graduate. He's also the son of the, of our, who helped us get this program going. He's also the grandson of Specialist Joseph Bavona, US Army. He's a, he's a grand, who's his grandfather, whose banner will also be going up. And we also have Thomas Joseph Slattery III, US Navy, GM three. Mr. Kudrow, GM three is what? Thank you. Gunner's mate. Thank you so much. So we have three new Hometown Hero banners going up. We're really anxious to see them. We're going to hope that Specialist Joseph Bavona and Lance Corporal Vincent Caprano's two banners maybe could be put close together. If you could see that through, Mr. Kudrow, I appreciate it. Do we have anything from our councilor this evening? If you would just, the mic.
We are in the process of looking into the recent changes to the Affordable Housing Law and how it, it could impact Little Falls. So I believe we may have a memo in the next few weeks or so with that information. That's all.
Yes, I see. That's a very important topic that's coming, that's going to be troublesome for these, especially small towns moving ahead. Mayor, you have anything you want to add to that?
Councilman, simply that, I want to wish a happy, holy to everybody that is celebrating the holiday. Today is the, the day, and I want to wish them, everyone prosperity, harmony, and love on behalf of myself and this entire council.
Thank you. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Vancheri. I'm sorry, moved by Councilwoman Hablitz, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide a comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Mr. Kuscha, is anyone in our chat room? And I see no one that's coming before us here. Have a motion to close the public. Moved by Councilwoman Patel, seconded by Councilwoman Hablitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. Madam Clerk, call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Madam Clerk, read ordinance fourteen eighty, please.
Introduction of Ordinance Number fourteen eighty, an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to add Chapter one thirty-four Mutual Aid of, to the Code of the Township of Little Falls, with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four.
Have a motion to introduce fourteen eighty.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Hablitz, seconded by Councilwoman Patel. Have a roll call to introduce fourteen eighty.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance fourteen eighty-one.
Introduction of Ordinance Number fourteen eighty-one, an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter one sixty-three of the Township Code regarding requirement for inspection of lead-based paint in certain residential dwellings with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you. Have a motion to introduce fourteen eighty-one.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance fourteen eighty-two.
Introduction of Ordinance Number fourteen eighty-two, an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Little Falls Fire Division in the Code of the Township of Little Falls, Code Section three dash seven point eight, entitled Fire Division, with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you. Have a motion to introduce fourteen eighty-two. Moved by Councilman Vancheri.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Murphy. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk, on fourteen eighty-two.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobah.
Yes. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Murphy, seconded by Councilwoman Hablitz. Madam Clerk, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the statement.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Is, it is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. Mr. Kuscha, is anyone in our chat room? I see no one coming before us in the council chambers. Have a motion to close the public comment. Moved by Councilman Vancheri.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hablitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Moved by Councilman, Councilman Vancheri, seconded by Councilman Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll go into executive session.
Council President, I'd estimate twenty to thirty minutes.
Yes. Maybe a long time, twenty to thirty minutes. Okay. Chief, we'd like your presence in that executive session.
Good.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Have a motion to return to open, open session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancheri, seconded by Councilman Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I want to thank the staff for their, they're helping me to put on this meeting this evening. Can, there was no action taken with the executive session. Action may be taken at a later council meeting. Have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Moved by Councilwoman Patel, second by Councilwoman Hablitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This meeting is now closed.